We are now recording.
All right, everybody ready?
Yep.
Terrific. I still have 5:59, I'm sorry. All right, good evening, everyone. This is the Swamaco Village Board Meeting for Monday, May 2nd, 2022. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. And I would like you to motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Trustee Schneider, seconded by Trustee Romas. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, we will go to item number five, which is public appearances. At this time, those in the audience who wish to come and speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. Please provide your name and address for the record. And realize that no action can be taken on this item during this meeting. However, what you bring forward could be referred to staff, administration, or committees. Is there anyone who wishes to make a public appearance and speak? If you would come forward now.
Well, I wanted to mention that this weekend was Swamaco Village Rummage Sale. There were 160 participants. And I just wanted to recognize and kind of thank Claudia Delmarcelle. She makes those maps. And does a really good job on them. It's a fun, fun weekend.
It's a fun weekend just to drive around Swamaco and see all the action, even when it's pouring rain.
Yeah, well.
All right, very good. Anyone else? Anything else? All right, hearing none. We go to item number six. Item number six is the consent agenda. This evening, we have A, previous minutes of the village board dated 4/18/2022. We have item B, Treasurer's March 2022 Report. Item C, Treasurer's March 2022 Check Registry. The D, 2021 Room Tax Report. E, New Hire Finance Part-Time Accountant Lori Kraus. F, H S Y S A, Howard Swamaco Youth. What is it?
Sport.
Thank you, that's what it is. Boy, oh boy. We have that. Pictic License for June 24 through 26, July 22 through 24, and July 28 through 31, 2022. And finally, we have G, Operator's License with one denial, Amy J Dupree. Are there questions on the consent agenda? If there are no questions, I would look for...
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Trustee Eckert to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Andrews. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. All right, item number seven, administrative items. 7A, Howard Swamaco Historical Society MOU, Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. So at the last village board meeting, the village board requested that the Tremble Schoolhouse be added to the MOU. I have since done that. And a copy was included in your packet. And just looking for either approval or approval with conditions from the village board tonight. The historical society has reviewed it, and they are agreeable to the MOU.
So just the things in red are different. None of the times have changed?
Correct.
Okay.
Are there questions for Mr. Kaker on this item? Anyone?
Were the, were the neighbors consulted about this?
No.
And what are the changes besides Tremble School?
It was only for the Tremble School. That was the only update. So everything else remains consistent with the previous.
So no changes from the previous? Okay.
Well, if there is no discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the MOU between the village of Swamaco and HSHS as presented.
I'm sorry, just a point of discussion. So as I'm looking at this, just one thought I had. Tremble School, the hours?
Yes. Eight to eight.
Eight to eight. Okay.
I'm thinking, you know, a Boy Scouts meeting might start at six. Figure they should be over by eight.
Maybe I'm just missing it. Is it listed on this document?
On page two.
Thank you, that's the page. The back page. All right, perfect. No other questions. We have a motion on the floor.
I have one question. I don't know if I'm in order here. So can we put something in the memorandum of understanding that talks about timeline for renovation for the school? To reach a point where... So one of the comments I heard from the neighbors was that they were concerned about the condition of the school. And I think if we had a timeline that said, we expect that it will be renovated by a certain time and occupiable, that might be a benefit to this.
Suppose you could. I guess what would be the repercussion if they didn't? Are you gonna have somebody move the Tremble School back?
No, but the repercussion would, say, say we took that further down the line, right? Imagine the situation where the school was never renovated and was a hazard. Then we would condemn it, right? So I think it's, as a memorandum of understanding, I think it'd be appropriate in there to have something that tells everybody what the expectation is so that residents or neighbors don't look at this in October and wonder why it's not fixed yet, you know? There doesn't have to be a consequence.
How are you gonna define finished?
Occupiable and within, if you have, say, within reasonable opinion of an average person, the building has been remodeled or renovated.
Well, I believe it's just the exterior at this point.
Yeah.
I think we could refer this to Mr. Dunks because when people do a remodel, don't they have a certain amount of time to get it accomplished?
We give them two years.
That's what I thought, it's two years.
And all we really care about is, again, the exterior.
Yeah. So I would think that would kind of hold true.
Are there permits that need to be pulled for this renovation?
There will be permits, yes.
Haven't even been pulled yet?
Not yet.
And they're not within the window of... There is no window, never mind. My concern would be the idea of, you know, what a reasonable person would consider, you know, because, I mean, what's a reasonable person? Right? I don't know how we'd get there. I don't know how we'd document that.
I think your suggestion to Mr. Dunks is pretty good, right? We have a, we have a way of doing that now with any building or any construction. They just fall under the same rules.
Okay, so that doesn't necessarily need to be documented, though, because that applies to this building, just like it applies to every other building. Correct. You are? Anyone else have any other questions? Or, because the motion is on the floor from Trustee Andrews to approve this item, this memorandum of understanding. There were the two points of reference brought up, and I apologize. For some reason, I completely missed page two. And Mr. Romas has made his point. Do I have a second to Mr. Andrews' motion?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Schneider to approve this memorandum of understanding. Is there any further discussion from the board? All right, very well. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you.
So, Tim, we'll get that signed, and we'll reach out to you to come in and sign it. Thanks, Tim.
All right, moving on. We are now at item 7B, which is the Wetland Mitigation Bank Letter of Credit Reimbursement Agreements, Administrator Kaker.
So we can table this tonight. Long story short, we received closing documents after we had sent out the board packet. Those closing documents did not meet our expectations. We have a meeting that is scheduled for Friday between our attorney, our financial advisor, and then Fortify Bank. And hopefully, we'll hash out the details. And fingers crossed that the next meeting, we'll have an agreement that the board can consider.
So no further action on this item than this evening?
Correct.
I still look forward to an agenda when this isn't on it.
Me too.
I bet. All right. Moving on, administrative items. Item C, Q1 Financial Report. Get to hear from Director Lee Joyce. It is our lucky day.
Included in your packets is the General Fund Financial Report. That includes a statement of revenues and expenditures and also the first quarter budget to actual. The statement of revenues and expenditures shows excess revenues over expenditures of between 2.2 million and 2.5 million in each of those years from 2020 to 2022. Both the revenues and expenditures as a percent of budget were roughly the same in the first quarter of 2022 as in the first quarter of 2021. For the first quarter, overall general fund spending is at 20%, so it's slightly below the 25% expected spending level after three months of the year. The only subcategory where expenditures exceeded this level was in the total recreation programming. That was at 31%. We don't generally get concerned about that because normally, we also see increases on the revenue side for recreation fees. So if you do look at those total recreation fees, you would see that those are currently tracking at 36%. The items that stand out at the end of quarter one are the intragovernmental revenues at 17% and the licenses and permits, which are at 13%. So the intragovernmental revenues are paid to the village on a set schedule that's set by the state. And those dates are indicated on the actual budget report. So you'll see the months in which those aid payments, for example, are paid. Under the licenses and permits, the bulk of those funds are road permit revenues from the TDS infrastructure project. And then a number of our licenses and permits are seasonal in nature. And then finally, it should be noted that we do expect to receive the second tranche of the American Rescue Plan Act funds in June. That amount is $683,066. We do hold those funds in a special revenue fund. And so you won't, you won't see those in the general fund financial reports. And there's no action required on the report tonight.
Thank you for doing it, though. It's good to see where we're at as the year goes on.
Jessica, can I make one request? For those of us with failing visions, can you turn it this way so it can be a little better?
I do print mine that way, and I get it. Yes, we can do that.
Very good. I really appreciate this report for the same reason that Trustee Eckert mentioned.
Nice to see where money's going.
All right, any other questions for Director Lee Joyce? Very well, let's move on to item 7D. 7D is Ordinance 2022-08, Amending Chapter 11 of the Swamaco Municipal Code Related to Peace and Order. Second reading, Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. So Ordinance 2022-08 will amend the Swamaco Municipal Code, and it will adopt state statutes relating to trespassing on railroads as well as getting on and off cars. So this gives officers the opportunity to issue citations instead of taking people off of jail whenever they see a violation. Just gives them more discretion.
This is reasonable to do, but I'm just wondering, have there been more ordinances lately, just in general? There seems to be a lot on this agenda.
On this agenda, sure. It happens. Sometimes we go through waves of ordinances, and sometimes it's months between ordinances.
Okay, are we doing more than usual, or is it just seem like it today?
We're not trying to. It just happens.
May I ask?
Yes.
So in this scenario, what we're dealing with is, we're giving the village the ability to take an actual action against a trespasser or a person who's on a car, whereas before they had to just say, get off the car?
Before, it was you're arrested, and we're taking you to the county jail.
Okay, so prior to this, were I to be trespassing on railroad property, I would be arrested and taken to county jail. What we're doing is we're giving our enforcement people the ability to say, you know what? Just get off the tracks. You're not supposed to be on them. And then maybe the second time, give them the ability to give a citation, and then maybe later on. So we're allowing a little bit of leniency.
So they could always, they could always just give them a warning. Even today, they could give a warning. But this would allow the officers to give a municipal citation. So they'd come in, they'd be before Judge Rathburn, they wouldn't be down in Circuit Court.
So it'd be kind of a second...
Keep them in-house.
Sort of adding a second layer that we're doing? Is that...
Options.
It's just a replacement.
Because if you send, if you take them to jail, the village has to pay for that if they have to stay there or wherever. That comes out of our... This way, you can give them a citation, especially nowadays with funds being short. Like you said, it's a little bit leniency, so you don't have to send them to the process, but it still drives the point.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and it doesn't have to be leniency either, does it? I mean, they could still send them to jail if...
If it's like aggravated.
It just gives the officers additional ways to go with it. I mean, if you get someone on the tracks and they're just being belligerent, okay, well, now we're gonna take a trip.
Exactly.
Talk yourself out of a ticket into jail.
But if I'm there putting a penny on the track, like I'm a child, as a minor, then...
Are there other questions? Other discussion points? If there's no other questions or discussion points, I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of St. Louis State Statutes 192.32, Trespassing on Railroad, and 192.321, Getting On and Off Cars, as presented.
Thank you. So there is a motion on the floor to approve the ordinance, adding the municipal ticketing of individuals per 192-321 and 192.32. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second from Trustee Ward. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify.
Roll call.
You're right, it's an ordinance.
Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Ward?
Aye.
Trustee Romas?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
President Van Rossum?
Aye.
Motion carried six zero.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on. Item E, 7E, Ordinance 2022-09, Amending Chapter 3, the Swamaco Municipal Code Related to Special Assessment Procedures. First reading, Administrator Kaker.
So as staff is exploring the concept of potentially extending sewer along East Deerfield Avenue, which we'll get into at a future meeting, we were taking a look at our code as it relates to special assessments and noticed that there was a little bit of gray area in terms of whether or not the village board would have any discretion to levy special assessments. But in certain situations, like if you have funding available in your TIF district, right now, it's not quite clear if you'd have the discretion to use those funds in lieu of special assessments. So I updated 3.027, which includes the words, replaces the words shall with may, and hopefully that clears things up. And it really just gives you, the village board, more discretion in the future on any type of infrastructure project where special assessments may be levied, which I think is beneficial to the village board. And this is just a first reading. Any questions?
I like that there's sidewalks on there, too, and there's, you know, a couple other things, so I think it makes sense.
So no action necessary, but are there any other questions for Administrator Kaker? Okay. Very good. We'll look forward to this coming back. All right, moving on. Item 7F, Personnel Policy Manual Update, Meal and Miscellaneous Expenses. Administrator Kaker, if you would.
Thank you. So this is, I'm seeking an update to our personnel policy currently in our meals section. So this is if you're to go to a conference. The meal reimbursement rate is the same number as it was, I believe, in 2011. So it's $8 for breakfast, 12 for lunch, and 20 for dinner. My suggestion is that we go off of the U.S. General Services Administration Meals and incidentals per diem rate, which is something that the federal government uses for their employees. And what that does for us is it moves with inflation and as the times go, so that every couple of years, you're not coming back and revising the policy. And I also just wanted to make it explicitly clear that if the conference registration included meals, that if you decide not to take advantage of that meal, you can't go out and eat somewhere else and then also get reimbursed for that. So that's the suggested update to the personnel policy under Chapter 6, Print 2, Print O. Any questions?
So in red is what we have now in place?
Yeah, in red is what we have in place, and then it may be difficult to read, but the italicized version, which is just this middle section, is what we would replace with this bottom paragraph.
So what is it at right now? Because inflation's pretty high.
So I think in Green Bay, it's something like $12 for breakfast, 14 for lunch, and I think it's 26 for dinner in Green Bay.
Does that change based on the municipality? For instance, if you travel to New York City?
Yep, so you just type in the area code, and then it tells you what the U.S. General Services Administration has for that zip code.
Would you, would you, well, it is a good idea, because these numbers that are shown in red italics are, I can speak firsthand, are way too low.
Right.
So, but I'm curious, and one of the challenges that we have with the sort of, we, me, whatever, is when you have a moving target, it's like, okay, what is it this week? What is it this month? Does, does, and I did not look into this, I apologize, I didn't check this link. Is this link changing daily, weekly, monthly?
My understanding is that it's an annual update.
Okay, good. So it'd be something first of the year, whenever.
Well, really, any department head should be checking this before they go to a conference or they send staff to a conference and making their staff well aware of what the maximums are, so they're not surprised.
Thank you.
I guess I'm, I'm a little, you know, because I'm always watching pennies, and I guess you never know where it's going to be at. And that makes me a little nervous, but I mean, in the grand scheme of things, not a real big deal.
I don't think our budget is, I don't think our budget and numbers are tremendously large on this. We don't send a lot of folks to...
Does that stay within, and they have, do they have, well, they do have continuing expenses, right? So it would still have to stay within those amounts?
Correct. Yeah, I don't expect that this modification's gonna blow anybody's budget.
Just as an off question, how do you handle mileage? What numbers?
It's per the IRS reimbursement. Right now, I think it's 56.5% or 56.5 cents.
Per mile.
Yep, yep, okay.
And that's if we don't have a staff vehicle available.
Right, 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 right. Okay.
I'll offer a motion to revise Chapter 6, Parent 2, Parent O of the Village Personnel Policy Manual as recommended.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Trustee Schneider to revise the Chapter 6, Parent 2, Parent O of the Village Personnel Policy Manual as recommended. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Andrews. Is there any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. All right, moving on. 7G, Historic Downtown Swamaco Educational Signage. Once again, Administrator Kaker.
So I had a business owner approach me last week requesting that the village install some sort of signage in historic downtown Swamaco that kind of gives informational tidbits about the history of Swamaco. Thought it was a decent idea. I thought I'd run it by the village board. If you were interested in this, I would suggest that the Historic Preservation Commission be the one tasked with coming up with the language and/or the design of the sign if there were to be any. But I just thought it was an interesting idea and thought I'd bring it to the board for discussion.
Obviously, I'm gonna say very cool idea, but what, did they mention a topic? And we would need a budget for these signs to...
Oh, sure, yeah.
That we've kind of talked about things like this. But still, what would the topic be? And...
That's what the Historic Preservation Commission would discuss.
Would this come out of, would this come out of TIF dollars, then?
No, we've hit the expenditure period. If anything for this year, which it doesn't have to be this year, it would be contingency funds, but if you wanted to put this until next year, if this is something you were interested in, we could certainly budget for it in '23. We just need to know if there's a general interest from the village board before we task the Historic Commission with doing some work.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it is.
Tell the story.
I like, I like the idea, but I'm thinking there's already a lot of signs in that area, so the smaller iron sign is the way I'm leaning, because we've already put parking lot signs and historic downtown Swamaco signs and, you know, business signs. Is there enough traffic to warrant this, though?
I think if you put it in front of, like, Pelkins Meat Market, people who are going to Chives and the Station One Brewery, I think...
I think you get a lot of, I mean, between...
Toons on Tuesday.
With what's down there right now, between Station One Brewing Company, Pelkins...
Chives.
Sport. You get a lot of activity down there now.
And part of the warrant equation is how much is the cost? Right?
Right.
Send it to committee and let them feder it out. Let them hammer it out.
Okay. I think I have a general consensus, and I know the Historic Preservation Commission is meeting tomorrow, and we kind of put that on there as a placeholder that if the board was agreeable, they could start that conversation tomorrow night. And so I think Steve Dunks, you've got some direction. Good luck.
Very cool.
Terrific.
Do you need a motion?
No.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, 7H, Committee and Commission Appointments. So in front of you is the list of committee and commission appointments with the diligence of our deputy clerk and the efforts put forward. All of our positions are currently populated, so we do not have any open positions on our committees. There are a couple of things that you might want to look at on here. We did talk about... I think we can just look at what we have here. I think that's fine. So does anyone have any questions or any concerns on these recommendations?
Is, on the cemetery committee, is the chair, it's Bob Vickery, is he still, is he still gonna be in it?
He is still on. He was not up this time, just Eileen was. So, but he's been chair since you guys formed in 2018, so.
Okay.
So if there aren't any other questions, we would look for a motion to approve the appointments as submitted.
So moved.
Thank you. Trustee Schneider has offered a motion to approve the appointments as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Trustee Ward. Any other further discussion? There's a second from Trustee Ward. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Let's have everybody moving forward. All right, we are on to item number eight, Public Works Department Item, Ordinance 2022-10, Amending Chapter 6.20, Parent 114, Parent Refuse, Refuse Holling Permitting, and we get a return visit from Director Smith. This is, this is great.
Thank you.
It's been a long time.
It has been. I'm just here to talk about the removal of Subparagraph B from our Chapter 6. We talked about it at the last meeting, to remove the requirement of the village to hold the refuse hauler permit here with the village. As we talked about, it really is an unclear intent on the village's part. We don't, you know, we don't file this with the DNR or the state. We don't really hold this information for anything other than to collect that fee and to have that entity permitted for the year. So we kind of decided that it was best to eliminate the permit and not charge these haulers the fee that we had on our schedule. So tonight would be the first reading to remove Subparagraph B from Chapter 6.20, Paragraph 14.
Of course.
So I think we covered this committee, but I just wanted to make sure it was heard by everybody. How much per year is generated by this refuse fee?
It was about $2,000.
Okay.
We had, on average, probably, on average, three to five haulers a year that would comply and actually pull the permit and pay the fee. And this year, we've had four, I believe, so far.
Okay. And so that permit fee is how much?
500.
500?
Yep.
This is a first reading?
Correct.
Okay.
Do any other municipalities you know of have a refuse hauling permit?
I could not find one. I looked in all the Brown County municipalities, and none of those had one. I could not find one.
Nobody has a permit? Nobody requires a permit? Wow. Does the state of Wisconsin require anything with a license?
So the DNR and the state do, yes.
License, okay.
Yep. And I'm not sure what the fee is for the state. I don't know that, but I did look up. I didn't search outside of Brown County for municipalities that had this, but I could not find one in Brown County that had, has collected this.
Let me ask you, because usually, it's not really with us, but the big issue that came up was it's unfair for large haulers to pay the same rate as small haulers. Does the state do anything different for the size?
I'm not sure. I don't think so because, I mean, unless you report your tonnage and what you have, and if you fall under a certain category, it's possible, but I doubt it. I mean, you still have to have your DNR certified number. That's through the state. I'm sure it's a fee for that, to carry that number and have that inspection done.
Yeah.
How much time do you guys feel like with, when the village staff level is spent enforcing this?
I mean, each year it seems to have different time involved, but, I mean, I know this year we kind of cracked down on it a little harder, and I was spending probably a good half hour a day for a couple of weeks there on the phone with these haulers. Steve thinks it's funny.
Only because I sent them there.
Yep. So I think it's worthy, and I think it's a good time to eliminate this. I mean, people felt like we were here ripping them off, and that's really not our intent.
Any other questions for Mr. Smiths? All right, we'll look forward to this coming back. Thank you. We are on item number nine, which is Recreation Department Trail Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Update. Director Lemke?
Thank you. Been working with Mr. Devin Yoder from Brown County Planning Department to develop and update the village of Swamaco's trail bicycle and pedestrian plan from 2010 to 2015. As you may or may not recall, in July of 2020, the village of Swamaco expressed interest in updating this trail plan and asked the Brown County Planning Commission to provide a project cost estimate to be completed in this year, 2022. In further discussions with the Brown County Planning Commission, they offered to also include a bicycle and pedestrian component as part of this review and plan update. Since the village of Swamaco is in the Green Bay MPO area, this project can and will be completed at no cost to the village.
That's good.
This plan's recommendations will be developed based on several factors, including an advisory committee and citizen input. Therefore, the initial stages include forming a trail bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee and also providing a community public survey. Community members to date include Devin Yoder, representing the Brown County Planning Department, Steve Andrews, Village Board Trustee, and Park Rec and Forestry and Trail Representative, Roy Kraus, Park Rec, Forestry and Trail Representative, Andy Smiths, Parks and Works Director for the village of Swamaco, Matt Geezy, Brown County Parks Director, Rob Zastro, representing the Swamaco Planning Commission, Joe Bertler, Fire Chief, and Mark Bisani, the DEO Number Two for the village of Swamaco. Our first committee meeting will be this week, Wednesday, May 4th, at 10:00 a.m. I will continue to provide updates and information to the village board as this process proceeds and continues on. No action required this evening.
Good.
Be careful, though. They're going to want you to spend more than I think we're willing to spend. So keep an eye out.
Will do.
Where is the meeting? I know it's at, on May 4th, at 10:00 a.m.
Here in, yep, yeah, the committee, the committee meeting room.
Are you volunteering, Mike? I was asked for a public works member, and nobody raised their hand, so.
Well, Wednesdays are a tough day for me. But if I can sneak out and you'll cover me with my, oh, this is on the record, so maybe.
You're catching on quick.
Join us if you can make it.
Here, let me mute.
Excellent, well done. All right, thank you, Mr. Lemke. We'll look forward to that. When do you think the completion of that, when are they looking at having that completed?
By the end of this year.
The end of this year.
Yep. So the committee will meet first Wednesday of every month if it was completed.
Great. All right, item number 10, Discussion on Future Agenda Items. Anyone with future agenda items?
Not a future agenda item, just a question. It was brought up that TDS is for their permits. Have they started laying their fiber? Do, I mean, do you know how much they have percentage-wise done, or?
They probably have.
Or they don't, they say that.
What's that?
Or they don't share that with you?
Oh, no, we, so we permit them one DFN at a time, so there's going to be about 12 permit packages, we'll call them, throughout the whole village. Right now, they have been permitted to work in one and two.
Okay.
So they've done basically Lineville and Velp.
Yep.
Corridor up. Now they're working in DFN 2, which is kind of everything to the north of our office here. And three would be from Pelican Estates area north, County B. So right now, we haven't issued permit three yet until things get caught up and we see noticeably better restoration and stuff before we will let that permit three. So I'd say right now, they're probably at about 15% into the project.
Because I know they said they wanted it done this summer, so.
Well, they had intentions of a two-year install. So they have, they planned for two years on this project here in Swamaco. I'd say they're in that 10 to 15% completion range at this point.
Just waiting for it.
Yep, yep, we haven't seen anything for your area yet.
Just waiting for it. That was the only thing I needed.
Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Trustee Schneider to adjourn this evening's meeting, and we have a second by Trustee Ward. Is there any further discussion by the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, Mike, that wasn't too bad.